Good evening, thank you all of you parents and family that have come and staff from different various schools to congratulate our winners of our citizenship contest that PTA sponsored this year. And we have our winners with us here. I will introduce to you Diane Johnson, who will kind of get things started.
Thank you Deb. As she said, we're from Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA, or sometimes we call it SMAC PTA. I won't go there when you say, "I'm on SMAC." You have to always say PTA after that. So, we are here to celebrate citizenship. And the citizenship program is a Kansas PTA program that was started in the 1970's. And the beauty of this program is, it gives our kids a chance to see, how can I make Kansas and my own city a better place? Doesn't necessarily mean the kid that has mastered their periods and the right tenses of verbs wins. It means the kid that has the right idea. They may write it in pencil, they may not type it. They have a chance to have their thoughts heard and to really think about, what does it take to make my place a better place to live? And how can I be a working member of my school and my town and that kind of thing? So, we love the citizenship program. It's for grades five through nine, and we have two different sections there. We have the poetry contest and the essay contest. So, we'll have a winner in poetry for grade five, a winner in essay for grade five, you know how that works. As I said, it started in the 1970's and we're very proud to say Kansas PTA is going to celebrate their 100th year this year. We will have a convention in Kansas City, Kansas, and we're very excited about that. So, Kansas PTA has been around for a while. The theme this year was, "I can positively influence my peers by..." And with all the bullying and things like that that are going on right now, it's a great thing for kids to think, "How can I be a positive influence? How can I spread positive energies?" So, we really like, we like the theme that we had this year. Our winners that are first-place winners will go on and represent Shawnee Mission District at the state level. Historically, we have done a fantastic job at the state level. Shawnee Mission always places very well. So, our kids that are first-place winners will do that. We had 1,992 entries this year, so we have great kids that are working. Give these kids a round of applause before we get started.[211.31][211.31][applause] I told them they had to sing right before they walked in, and some of them got kind of afraid. I'd like to introduce Pam Hale, who's our president for Shawnee Mission Area Council PTA.
Thank you Diane. All right. Well, and of course, what we are here for is recognizing great kids, because we have tons of great kids in the Shawnee Mission School District. So, it's wonderful to be able to recognize some of these kids. And we really appreciate the Board of Education allowing us to come in and give this opportunity to them, to show how they shine. I would also like to introduce to you guys, our cultural arts vice president at the Shawnee Mission Area Council level, Linda Brayley. And I'm drawing a blank. Dee Wright. Dee Wright. I was about to call you Crystal. That's a long story. Dee Wright is the chair of the citizenship contest this year, and she's the one that collected all of the entries, those 1,900 and some entries, from the, at the district level and had those judged. And she, and came up with our winners this evening. So, we're going to announce to you, our first-place winners, we will announce first. These winners are what we call our Award of Excellence winners. They will, their essays were sent to the state of Kansas to be judged at the, at the state level. So, we haven't heard anything, we haven't heard anything yet, but last year at this time, we had heard something. So, who knows, I might receive an email while we're, while we're here. I hope so. We'll start off with fifth grade. Our essay winner in fifth grade is Victoria Jinks from Belinder Elementary School.[337.44][337.44][applause] And our poetry winner in fifth grade is James Russell from Brookwood Elementary.[354.03][354.03][applause] Sixth grade essay winner is Aislinn Menke from Tomahawk Elementary.[370.13][370.13][applause] Winner in poetry from sixth grade is Kiana Nickel from Rising Star.[385.87][385.87][applause] And seventh grade essay winner is Dylan Weddle from Westridge.[402.72][402.72][applause] Seventh grade poetry is Lauren Kelly from Trail Ridge.[416.41][416.41][applause] Our eighth grade winner for essay is Sarah Schaefer, Indian Woods.[431.91][431.91][applause] Eighth grade poetry essay, or I'm sorry, poetry winner is Sky Betzer from Indian Woods.[450.47][450.47][applause] Ninth grade, we gotta work on ninth grade. We really gotta work on, those ninth graders, they get to high school and they just forget everything. We only had a poetry, we only had poetry entries, so we have a winner, a winner for the ninth grade poetry is Sarah Wheeler from South.[478.44][478.44][applause] And again, those are all of our first-place winners that will go on to the state level
Dr. Henson, would you like to come get in the photo op?
Of course.
[laughing] Unloading his pocket. [inaudible] 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 There's a few more snapping out there. Wait, look at that. There we go, okay. All right, thanks guys. And our second-place Award of Merit winners for fifth grade essay, Sydney Bowns from Fifth grade poetry, Emiliano Salazar from Shawana.[613.62][613.62][applause] Sixth grade essay, Abrisha Howard from Ray Marsh.[627.91][627.91][applause] Sixth grade poetry, Jackson Weaver from Belinder.[645.62][645.62][applause] Seventh grade essay, Luke Bledsoe from Indian Hills.[665.23][665.23][applause] They're gonna be pros.[679.43][679.43][laughing] Seventh grade poetry, Derek Miller, Westridge.[684.43][684.43][applause] Eighth grade essay, Brianna Epsin, Westridge.[696.82][696.82][applause] Is not here this evening, and actually, and also our eighth grade poetry Award of Merit, Katie Johnson, also from Westridge, could not be here this evening. So, those are all of our, those are all of our wonderful winners at the, at the district level. And you guys should be very proud of yourselves, because again, there were almost 2,000 entries, and you guys are the cream of the crop. So, congratulations, good job.[727.56][727.56][applause] And I want to assure you that what you have in your hand is not all that you're gonna get this evening. So, if you'll join us downstairs for a little reception, there's also a few more cool little goodies downstairs. So, um, okay. So, Award of Merit winners, the guys that have the ribbons in your hands, if you guys would come together here right in front of the podium.[758.12][758.12][laughing] Thanks. Oh, oh. The more important photos. All right, well, thank you so much guys. There's a reception downstairs for all the parents and stuff, but the principal doesn't care tonight. Thank you, congratulations guys. [inaudible] 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 There's a reception downstairs for all the parents and stuff, but the principal doesn't care tonight. Thank you, congratulations guys. [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Yes, we should start the meeting. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for coming this evening. I would invite you at this time to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. If you picked up an agenda over there, a paper agenda, you can follow, or of course you can look at the screens here and follow along with the proceedings for this evening. We will start off with the superintendent's report, Dr. Hinson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. I have several things for you this evening. I would like to start off by making an announcement that you have heard 13 previous times. The South's Academic, South High Schools Academic Decathlon Team won first place in this place in the state competition for the 14th consecutive year in a row. The team won a total of 68 medals, including five of the top six spots in the overall scoring. However, there is one item of contention that I have to bring to you tonight because the Nationals are being held in Hawaii.
Chaperone.
And they've asked for a board chaperone, but only one. No, they have not. I'm just kidding about that. But congratulations to our South Academic, certainly Decathlon Team, and certainly to all of the individuals that work with these students as well. 14 consecutive years, a phenomenal accomplishment, and they will be traveling to Hawaii at the end of April, and so we wish them well. We have a board meeting during that timeframe, so sorry, all of us will be here. There are certainly things that a school board gets blamed for that they had no involvement with, other things that you get credit for that you always had involvement with. Not sure you can get credit for the South Academic Decathlon Team, but this is School Board Recognition Month. And so we have something that we want to share with you this evening in a video format, and so we're going to try to start that now. But we want to thank you for everything that you do. No one really probably spends as much time with you as I do, and so I know the things that you wrestle with, the difficulties that come your way. And again, there are a lot of things you get blamed for that you had nothing to do with at all. We'll talk about that tonight, but again...
I like how our teachers push us to do the best that we can.
You get to do numbers, and it's really fun.
I love my job. It kind of almost feels like I come to work to play every day.
I love teachers everywhere because they give us an idea on how we're supposed to act.
The addition of that auxiliary gym was really nice to have. It's just cool knowing that this is our space.
Really cool to be part of the first production on the stage. We're kind of making history a little.
The Bradmore Bistro has given me lots of opportunity to learn more about baking and pastry arts and how fun baking.
I'm studying C. elegans for Alzheimer's research.
I started theater when I came to Westridge, and it's really become a big part of my life. Band is something I'm really involved in, and I'm looking to pursue in high school.
With football, basketball, I think you see most high school players going to college levels from the SMSE district, so very privileged to be a part of that as well.
Thank you! Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Shawnee Mission Board of Education!
I also am going to distribute certificates to you, and so if you'll stand with me, and I'll hand a certificate to you. But sincerely, people don't understand the role sometimes of a Board of Education and how important you are to the success of the school district. And so we pause one time a year to really say thank you for all of your service, your dedication, your commitment to kids. I think everybody understands this is a volunteer position. You spend a lot of time and a lot of your own money to make great things happen for the kids in the Shawnee Mission School District, and so thank you for all your work and your effort, and sincerely, the video the kids expressed thank you as well. It's very important, and I've told everybody I've ever talked to, not only in Shawnee Mission, but everywhere, the most important factor in any school district is quality of the Board of Education. So, so many decisions you have to make. A lot of, I call them jump ball issues come to you. Regardless of the decision you make, some people are going to be happy, some people are not going to be happy, but that's just the position that you're in, in this volunteer position of leadership. So thanks for everything you do for all of our kids. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Neighbor?
Thank you.
Did you want us to stand? You said if you'll stand, we're sitting.
They don't take instructions very well.
No, we don't.
Still working on them. So, Mrs. Mack?
Thank you.
Mrs. Zila?
Thank you.
The coveted.
Mrs. Goodburn?
Thank you.
Dr. Denny?
Very nice.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Levens?
Thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause. This last week, we were able to make really a phenomenal announcement in our community. One of our families, one of our Board of Education members, Dr. Denny and his wife Terry, they made a very significant contribution to the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation for STEM education. So that was in the amount of $100,000. And so, Dr. Denny, again, I wanted to take this opportunity before everybody that's watching this audience to thank you for your donation to SMF, the impact it's going to have on students, certainly in our school district. So thank you very, very much.
He wasn't kidding when he said we spent some of our own money.
Let me discuss an issue with you. This is one of these things that you get blamed for that you didn't have anything to do with. So we've had something that's unfolded in the school district that I want to go through kind of the details of really what's occurred. We had a poster that was displayed at Hocker Grove Middle School as a part of Making a Difference. So we have an abstinence-based approach to the teaching of human sexuality in the Shawnee Mission School District, and it's the right approach. We have a textbook that we use as a part of this instruction, and there isn't anything wrong with this textbook either. We also have supplementary materials called Making a Difference. These materials, by our own policy, they don't come to the Board of Education. So the things you get blamed for, so Making a Difference because of supplementary material status and the cost never came to you and wasn't under your preview. The Making a Difference supplementary materials were purchased in the 12-13 school year. They were purchased by some individuals in our curriculum department, which they have the right to do in the school district. The materials, a portion of these materials, so a portion of Making a Difference, which are supplementary materials, have brought certainly mixed reaction, but I find some of the materials to be objectionable. So I have suspended a portion of Making a Difference until we can follow our own policy and conduct this internal review to really ask ourselves a couple of questions. One, did we communicate appropriately to parents? And the answer is no. Secondly, are these materials appropriate for this age, this level of student? Again, I want to make it very clear, our abstinence-based approach to teaching of human sexuality is the right approach, but the supplementary materials that are in question, certainly I think that's something that needs to be reviewed. So I have suspended the implementation of this portion of Making a Difference until we follow our own policy, and it's reviewed by our own internal folks in relation to our curriculum department. So that's the current status. I don't have a timeframe on that right now. It won't be a very quick turnaround, and it's going to really take some time to investigate to say what happened here. I think it's very important that we always communicate very clearly and very effectively with parents, especially in regard to things that are sensitive in nature. And I do not think that happened. In fact, I know that did not happen in this case. So we're reviewing our own protocol to say, why didn't we communicate effectively? And then second, the second part is, is this portion of the supplementary material appropriate for students? So that review process is underway. Again, it's going to take some time. I can't guarantee you that'll be finished by the February board meeting per our policy. That's not an issue you have to deal with, so that decision is made by the individual that deal with curriculum, subject materials in the school district. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about that, but I wanted to really clearly delineate the process, what's occurred, and where we are currently in regard to this situation. Only other thing I'll mention to you this evening, we're following legislation very carefully. So there are a couple of different bills we're following this week, and so we'll see what transpires. One of those, Mr. DePiero and myself are discussing today in regard to any new construction for a school that would require a storm shelter. We're going to talk about school construction tonight, but as we read the current language of the bill, the guidelines wouldn't be developed until December of this year. And so that's kind of interesting because as we approve some things tonight, hopefully it's going to put us on a timeframe where we're going to have the plans approved and start construction before then, but the construction of the project won't be finished. So we're going to follow that with great interest, certainly not objecting to the consideration of discussion, what does school safety look like in relation to storm shelters. However, that's something that could have impact with us while we're in the middle of a process, and so we'll see what occurs there. There's legislation that's been introduced that would change the makeup of the Kansas State High School Activities Association. Certainly, you're aware that the governor was at one of our elementary schools this last week to talk about full-day kindergarten and the funding there. So we'll follow those things with great interest. My understanding is potentially there's going to be some legislation as well to deal with something we talked about in the work session in relation to some credit situations for high school students cooperating with Metropolitan Johnson County Community College and also higher education as well. So some really great things we think are being discussed. Other things we'll watch very carefully to see how they impact us. So it appears the session is starting to heat up in that regard. With that, that's all I have for you this evening.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hinson. We'll move on to open forum. Mrs. Wondring, do you have any speakers tonight?
Okay, very good.
Approval of the minutes of the December 16th meeting.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor. Is there any discussion?
If I could just, there's just one very small thing.
Mrs. Levens?
Yes.
In the open forum comments, Mrs. Fritz wished us a prosperous new year, which was -- and it said happy new year, and I just thought she intentionally used that word prosperous, and I just would like to add that correction. That was so...
All those in favor of the minutes as amended, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Levens. Adoption of the agenda. Move for adoption of the agenda? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Approval of routine business by consent. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbor.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Dr. Hinson? Would you like to comment on our consent agenda?
I would. We have several people that we would like to introduce this evening, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Chapman if she would make that first introduction, please.
Good evening. I would like to ask Lisa Grooman to join me at the podium, please. Lisa, while Lisa is making her way up here, I'll begin my introduction of Lisa. I am pleased to introduce you to Lisa this evening, who is being appointed as principal of Shawnee Mission Northwest High School. Lisa has been serving as the interim principal this school year and has been a teacher and an associate principal at Shawnee Mission Northwest High School since 2000. Previously, she was a math teacher at Shawnee Mission North High School. Lisa is a December 1995 graduate of University of Northern Iowa. Lured by teaching in a big city, Lisa came to Shawnee Mission as a student teacher and started her career at Shawnee Mission Northwest as a student teacher and at Westridge Middle School. Engaged to Dan at the time, who was student teaching in Omaha, Nebraska, they agreed to move wherever the first contract was offered. Luckily for us, we saw the opportunity, and Shawnee Mission North hired her as a math teacher in January of 1996. So we got her quickly. We knew a rising star when we saw one. Dan was a long-term sub until he was hired by Shawnee Mission Northwest High School as a math teacher. Lisa's master's degree is from University of Kansas, and she's currently working on her doctorate at KU. A graduate of the CAPS program, Lisa has distinguished herself as dedicated, thoughtful, and willing to tackle anything. Lisa was instrumental in bringing the International Back Laureate Program to Northwest High School in 2011. I'm sorry, and has participated in training with the teachers to develop an exemplary program. In 2011, the Milken family recognized Lisa as one of the top and coming, up-and-coming educators in the nation. Clearly, we see her as a top choice to lead Shawnee Mission Northwest. Staff and students describe Lisa as intelligent, innovative, and a great listener who's not afraid to make changes and to try new things. Marked by a successful teaching career, Lisa is an instructional leader who brings out the best in others. The staff, students, and parents celebrate her appointment and look forward to the future of Northwest with her leadership. Celebrating with Lisa this evening are her husband, Dr. Dan Grooman, her children, freshmen at Northwest High School, Hannah and seventh grader Noah. Congratulations, Lisa and the Grooman family.
I also wanted to introduce two other individuals for you, and I see I probably need to change a title because we have Chief Douglas as the Director of Safety and Security. And Chief, can you answer to any title other than chief? Should we say Chief of Safety and Security for the Shawnee Mission School District?
We got to hear what my wife calls it.
We don't want to know how that works. So it's an honor tonight to recognize Chief Douglas still that will be joining us May 1st for our Director of Safety and Security or the Chief Director of Safety and Security. Chief Douglas has been with the Overland Park Police Department for, shall we say, over four decades. Is that safe enough, Chief?
Then it'd be 41 years.
Forty-one years. He's been the chief of police for the city since 1996. And so so many accolades and awards, and as you know, he's really been instrumental in authoring this very large document in relation to safety and security for schools in defense of our schools. And I could read a long list of honors tonight, but it's really a privilege for us to welcome Chief John Douglas to the Shawnee Mission School District. You know, there are a lot of things that concern me every day, and if you've been following the news the last couple of weeks, every day I just cringe when I watch the news, and it's really, I don't want to say a sigh of relief, but very comforting to have Chief Douglas be joining us to direct all of our safety and security operations for the school district. We're honored to have you here with us, Chief, and so thank you very much. We can't wait until May 1st, and so let's give him a round of applause. One other individual I will introduce to you tonight that's been approved through our consent action. This individual, I don't have anything good to say about him at all, but we're going to hire him anyway. I'm just kidding you. It's a joke. I have worked with this individual for a long time. So Bob, if you would stand tonight. Bob Robinson is leaving the Independence School District to join us here in the Shawnee Mission School District. Bob's been their Director of Facilities, Purchasing, Warehouse Operations, and Technology for the last 20 years, over 20 years now there in the school district. I had a chance to work with Bob when we annexed in all the school buildings from Kansas City. That was all under his preview in bringing those buildings up to codes and standards, and so we've been through a lot of those issues together. I could talk to you about his leadership in the Chamber of Commerce and economic development and so many different activities, but the most important thing that I want to recognize, and Bob listed this, because a lot of the other things really don't matter, but Bob listed his greatest accomplishment is his family. And so Bob will be the Executive Director of our capital program and projects, and so working very delicately and intricately in relation to the Antioch Middle School site. All of these projects we're going to talk about tonight, all of these construction issues, they're all going to fall under Bob's preview. And so, Mr. Bob Robinson, welcome to the Shawnee Mission School District.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to letter N, which is action item. Dr. Hinson, back to you.
We have one item tonight, and it's the appeal of liquidated damages. My recommendation is that we waive the penalty in relation to the liquidated damages.
Okay. Move approval? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Mrs. Neighbor?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Dr. Hinson, N2?
Thank you. Item two is, I'm recommending tonight the approval of an agreement with Thomas McGee LC. It's third-party administrative services for our workers' comp program. It's a five-year agreement, but it's renewed annually with approval from the board. We've been using Thomas McGee for several years now, and my recommendation is that we continue this agreement with them.
Move approval of the agreement with Thomas McGee? Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Second. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, action and business services. Dr. Hinson?
I'm going to ask Mr. DePiero to comment on this as well, but as you know, we have been discussing for the last several years about rebuilding Shuano Elementary School, and so that was put on hold, but it's being brought before you tonight. What we're bringing before you tonight is in relation to architectural and engineering services, and Mr. DePiero, I'd ask if you'd comment on this as well, please.
Thank you. ACI is the designer of Apache Elementary School. We are recommending them for the rebuild of Shuano Elementary School. What we have done is used Apache as a template to build future buildings on, and ACI has agreed to reduce their fees accordingly to site adapt the current Apache design onto the Shuano site, which would, we found the Apache site to be a good educational model. The mechanical and electrical systems that are in that building are to the standard that we desire. There's no reason to update the design since the Apache building just opened about a year or two ago. And so in order to use the knowledge that they do have with building Apache, we asked ACI to tender us a proposal to rebuild the Shuano. We will be rebuilding Shuano in the same fashion as we rebuild Apache. That school will be held onsite at Apache, or at Shuano while the construction occurs, and so they're used to dealing with that kind of factor in their construction design and staging. And so we thought it was a benefit to the district to go back to them and have them do the same conceptual designs and the same layout as they have performed for us before. There will obviously be some differences in the site adaptations, and there will be some changes in the front entrances to give it a unique appearance, but the basic structure will stay the same, and the basic mechanical systems will stay the same. This new building design obviously will integrate the new security measures that we're going back through in retrofitting for, and so that'll be included in the initial design in this building. If there's any questions, I can answer them if my voice holds up.
Any questions? Okay.
I'd like to move approval of the architectural engineering, I'm sorry, architectural engineering services for Shuano, and note that several members of the staff are here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to O2, purchase of Apple computers.
This is a very exciting opportunity for us. As you know, one of the four issues identified for us by our community and our staff was in relation to technology. And so we've been working diligently, and really the district's been investigating this opportunity for quite some time, moving forward in the arena of technology. You know, one of the things that's almost sad to think about, but in the world in which we live today, the access to information, the access to technology, and then it's educational institution, sometimes it's the institution that's really lagging. institution, sometimes is the institution that's really lagging behind in relation to technology and the access to information. We have the ability to change that tonight. And so, I'm going to ask Dr. Chapman first to share some information. And so, Dr. Chapman, Debbie Fort Miller, and Ed Strike, we're all gonna share some information with you tonight in relation to this proposal.
With our iPads. We are really stretching ourselves. Dr. Strike has talked about his limitations. Debbie and I have, are really worked closely together for a long time, but we are all stretching ourselves. So as, as we fumble through, please don't mock us, but join us in this endeavor. As Dr. Henson mentioned, Ed Services and Administrative Services, we're gonna share a brief overview this evening of how this purchase would potentially impact the lives of our learners. So our objective for this presentation is to really talk about the four pillars of a successful implementation of this magnitude. And the first one is to create a picture. So we're gonna share with you what we view as our dream ideal implementation. And it's not exactly, because they're not, no school is exactly like Shawnee Mission or no school district. So it's a, it's a vision of where we wanna go. The second thing we wanna do is create a purpose. And our purpose is to, excuse me, improve achievement in our school district and prepare students for a future that we can't even dream about today. The third part, we wanna share our plan. We have involved a lot of people in our school district, and it's been a district-wide planning endeavor that has encompassed numerous meetings over many, many months. And lastly, we wanna emphasize the part that every single one of us will play in order to make this a successful implementation. The first thing we wanna talk a little bit about is the theory behind this project. And Dr. Ruben Puntador created a model called SAMR, S-A-M-R, and they each stand for an item that really matches nicely with Bloom's taxonomy. And so, at the, at the low level, we'd be looking at substitution. And this is an example of where maybe today, a teacher would assign a student to go home and write a research paper. And maybe that student would handwrite it if they don't have technology available at home. But a substitution level would be where we would, instead of saying handwrite it, the student would be able to utilize their device to actually write it in the device instead of on paper and then transfer later. So substitution would be a really basic level, and it's just substituting what we already do. The next level, which we wanna get higher and higher as we go through this hierarchy, would be more augmentation. And this might be creating a PowerPoint. So Debbie and I are augmenting, instead of standing up here and talking to you about this, we're augmenting. And we're also doing it with our, our notes are actually on our iPads, so we're really multitasking at the same time.
Very small print, however.
You can do that, you know.
We haven't figured out how to increase that yet. Another example, though, students could actually take a quiz via Google Forms, and the teacher would never have to print out a piece of paper. And so, students could actually take that and submit it to their teacher electronically. Moving up the ladder to modification, here's where a student could lead a discussion. They could create a podcast about a book or to demonstrate their knowledge. Perhaps they're even writing an iBook story that could be shared wirelessly with students at an elementary school or a middle school or even in college. Moving up to the redefinition level, which is really where we wanna be, because that's with creating, that's evaluating, and you're really redefining something. So students are learning about some topic, and then they're redefining it, and that's really the top level that we can be at. And that would be where maybe a student is creating a movie trailer on a book that they have studied in class, or perhaps with our Heroes Project coming up in the next week. That might be where fifth graders across the district maybe are collaborating on a hero because they can only choose one hero per building, but maybe they're collaborating with another fifth grader across, across the district that they've never met before. And then that heroes ceremony would be an opportunity for those students to meet face-to-face and talk about their hero that they researched and they spent the whole school year working toward. This could also be a classroom that's creating a documentary video answering questions, essential questions related to important concepts. Teams of students could take on different subtopics, collaborate, and create one final product, all without printing anything out and having the opportunity to utilize technology. And Mrs. Bissfield mentioned, there might be ways for us to explore in our school district, ways to deliver some of our signature programs electronically.
When you look at these pictures of these students that are little today, but soon they'll be in our schools, they know technology. They are not afraid of it. We've all watched it, we've observed it in a lot of different places around. They wanna embrace technology, and they wanna do it to further their learning. We're gonna watch a video in a few minutes, and what I want you to think about while you're watching the video is think back to the classroom that you attended. Think back to the things that were in the room, the way the teacher led your learning. And while you're watching that video, look to see how the teacher, which is still the most important person, leads that learning with new tools to an even broader expansion. No more quiz you.
Unengaged or disengaged, so we don't violate a copyright. They're utilizing iPads in the classroom, and even though that's not our recommendation for our high school students, I think it's really intriguing to see how they're utilizing it, how the students have adapted. You will be amazed at how they are moving through the screens as well as the teachers that are interviewed. This video is actually in Burlington, so you'll hear them talk about it, but I wanted to let you know it's not Burlington, Kansas, it's Burlington, Massachusetts. And so, you might notice their accent as well. We're starting at about 53 seconds into the video, and you'll see the high school principal actually be interviewed. One of the things he talks about in the early parts of the video is his office is actually in the hallway, and you'll see his office later on. He just has a desk in the hallway because that's where he connects with students. So when you see that at the end of the video, you'll, you'll know what he's talking about there.
We talked about what does innovation look like? What does an engaging classroom look like? It's a really incredible time to be a learner right now, but I think it's only incredible if you're giving your students access to the resources that are gonna allow them to do great things. Our students are in a world where technology is around them all the time. We can't expect them to learn if we put them in an environment that doesn't have it. Our job as administrators is to put more resources on the table for teachers and for students. Now, we have every kid in the building walking into their room with an iPad. The biggest reason the iPad was the device that we could go one-to-one with here at the high school was that we felt, and we still do, that it was the best content delivery device, and it was also the best content creation device. For the first time, we had it in one package. So students wouldn't have to go to a different device to work on a different task. They could use the iPad for everything in their classes.
The real push that we're going for here at Burlington is towards project-based learning. So now, I'm assigning larger projects to students, I'm giving them more freedom to dictate the terms of those projects. They can use the iPad and say, I'm gonna do a video, or I'm going to do a paper, or I'm going to do a website. It just opens up far more options for them than we ever had before. I think the, the way we educate students is fundamentally changing as a result of this.
A lot of schools made a mistake spending money on the same items year after year, even though those items are no longer needed. We don't need to put in those big computer labs that were just used for research and word processing, because when we have the iPads, we have research and word processing with every kid all day long.
You know, as a history teacher, I probably should say, I love textbooks, but I find them to be the best way to learn of the 19th century. Technology has moved us along to such a point that the textbook itself now is more of a hindrance.
Classic textbooks are static. They're outdated as soon as you print them. They are expensive, and they are not very engaging, if I'm honest. I've used iBooks Authoring for designing a lot of our own textbooks. It's a great authoring tool to be able to provide a really rich experience that's beyond just text on a page. It's great to not have to be bound by what's out there, but only be bound by what you can make.
Students are now helping the teachers develop curriculum, or they're suggesting something to do in the class with the iPad. It's an active thing. Everyone is learning together.
And you have students just loving what they learn a lot more. There's access to more information, and the whole school day is more dynamic, and it's a lot more free-flowing, and everything's just so much easier.
What was making a move was oxygen's down at the bottom of the electron transport, and the electrons are being pulled.
The impact of the iPad in the classroom has been tremendous. It's been an amazing learning tool for my students. Everything's much more current, much more present, and students can actually resonate with it better. When you open it up to a student and say, go find this and show me in your own words and in your own way, it becomes a much more powerful and lasting learning experience.
Positive things can happen when you open yourselves to change and give your kids tools that they're gonna be using when they leave school. People talk about living in a connected world. There's no vacuums anymore, the world's wide open. It's more important than ever to connect with kids. When you choose to work in a school, then you make a choice that you're gonna care about kids. If you don't think that's part of the job description, then you picked the wrong job. I feel like I have the best job in the world, 'cause I mean, what's better than changing the path of somebody's life?
Does anybody have anything that they saw differently than they had in their classroom?
We don't have enough time.
I did see the periodic table, so I know that.
As a math teacher, when I saw them take the picture of the problem that was up on the board, that, that so resonated with me because kids would be trying to follow what I was doing and yet trying to take the notes, and it was just an up-down, up-down, and there they had it. They had the example to take home with them to work through a problem that they could use. That was just one that really jumped out at me. These are artifacts that I remember, and I would have to gracefully say that I actually taught with many of these. The one on the left is the famous slide with the beep, and that was a challenge for teachers. There were teachers that that, that made them nervous. And then we moved to the reel-to-reel, which allowed us to have movies in the classroom. We have the classrooms of old where you see the globe, where you see the teacher is still the person that's leading, and we're not gonna take away from that. The teacher is still going to be the most essential component in this, but the tools are what are gonna be to guide that learning. I'm guessing this picture is from the 70s, and that was probably a very modern building. And there were many things that, in that day, that were put into buildings that enhanced learning, and that was what was modern for that day. And as we move to today, we've gotta keep moving forward so that those little people we saw in the first pictures look back and say, wow, the classroom of today looks old and we keep up with it.
This is an example of a modern classroom where every student has their own device that they have personalized. You probably can't see, but you can tell enough that no two students in this classroom have the same item on their screen, while the teacher is still guiding them and talking about generalizations that they see from the research. So this is what we would expect to see, that students are able to work at their own pace, yet personalize their learning with their own personal device. This is an ad from 1991 Radio Shack, and you know, you'll notice some things here that you can buy a mobile cellular telephone for $199, a CD player, a channel desktop scanner, let's see, what else? A radar detector, a computer for $15.99, a desktop computer, a camcorder, speakers, a phone, and, and a tape recorder as well. All of this would cost a little over $3,000, and today, all of our students are carrying these around, majority of our students, in a small device in their pocket, well under the market value of $5,000 if we were to go out and purchase all that. So our, our task as, as leaders of our school district is to provide support and guidance as students seek answers on their own, as they explore this worldwide web, and to keep them safe, and also guide them so that they, when they access information, they know what to do with it, and they know how to apply it to their own lives and to their future. This is an example of a 21st-century classroom in which students have access to personalized learning. And students today expect 24/7 access and timely feedback. When we see a tweet or something come across our screens, it's sometimes a little disappointing when no one likes it, or you haven't had a lot of favorites on it already, and it's a little bit of a letdown. But that's the way people are communicating today. We need to develop our students to be capable of problem-solving, of sharing their work on a worldwide stage. Our students are very confident in putting their own personal information out there and getting feedback from experts in the field. And so, we wanna develop them into problem solvers and creative thinkers and analysts.
Nationally, 91% of the teachers have a computer in their classroom available, but only about 20% of them feel like it is the right technology for them to reach their students with. Oftentimes, it may be just sitting on the desk. It may not be something that they can interact with students. Earlier, we heard conversation about real-world application for students and students going out into business avenues to work. And this is what's in the business world, is computers, applying the technology, learning the technology. And it's not that we're teaching a one-size-fits-all technology, it's the ability to problem-solve and learn, and that's what computers will enhance. The top three reasons to use technology are to adapt to diverse learning styles, because we have many, many different students, and they learn so many different ways in our classrooms. To boost student motivation and enhance that material that is being taught. And I think you can see with all of the computer-assisted technology, it can really enhance what our students can do.
This slide is one example of how our staff are working with teachers to transform the tools they use in their classroom to help students redefine their learning. Through purposeful and well-planned professional development, our staff gain confidence and competence in changing their delivery methods. Already, we have outstanding examples of how teachers have utilized iPads and laptops in their classrooms. So imagine daily access of how that use could change for our individual students and our teachers. We have examples from elementary students of them filming their own daily announcements and streaming it to their, their building. We have middle school examples of students creating commercials and applying economic terms of their learning in their social studies classes. And we have examples from world language classrooms where teachers are having students dictate into iPads, and so they can practice learning and listening to the language, creating mini-dialogues, utilizing flash, flashcards, collaborative assignments, sharing from building to building, and even doing tests via the iPad, which goes directly into the teacher's gradebooks. So we already have some fabulous examples in place. We wanna thank you, the Board of Education, but also our community, who has given extensive input and encouraged the school district to look at utilizing technology for staff and for students. Dr. Henson spent the first three months of his tenure here in the school district listening to our patrons, and this is one of the items that, that our patrons said they really wanna see more technology in our classrooms. So thank you, Board of Education, members for supporting and providing for the future of education of our Shawnee Mission students. And these little pictures that we saw of babies to come, we know that they're going to be attracted to our school district because we're providing up-to-date technology and opportunities for our kids to explore, not only in the classroom where we have them six to eight hours every day, but also 24/7, because we know that's what they want and that's what they expect. We have enjoyed a rich tradition, and now it's time for us to prepare for our future. So now, I'm gonna ask Dr. Strike to come up. They've developed in Educational Services an extensive plan for staff development, so I'd like to have him detail that.
Now, here's the real honesty. Dr. Chapman and Ms. Fort Miller wanted me to come up and show the litmus, be the litmus test for the Shawnee Mission School District, because if I can make technology work, anybody can make it work. And you know the old excuse I used to use? I left my book at home or my assignment at home. I didn't have a chance to go down to my office and get my iPad, which, thanks to April Bowman, our Educational Resource Specialist in charge of technology, who's my personal assistant, to ensure that even I, the idiot, can make it work. I was able to no longer use the excuse, 'cause I do have it on my phone, because she showed me how to do it. So if I can do it, anyone can. So with that, let me move through a little bit of conversation. Does this slide look familiar? I'd say John Dewey was ahead of his time. We definitely know that students today, similar to the video that you had the opportunity to watch, how rapidly students will be engaged in their own learning process. I can also tell you, when I was first presented the opportunity to learn a little bit about Apple, one of my biggest questions was how, actually, it was a two-part question. Number one, with technology, how will we see the way teachers teach look different? Number one, with technology, how will we see the way teachers teach look different? And more importantly, how will students engage in the learning process look different? And it's very easy to see with technology, students not only will become leaders of their own learning, they will also be facilitators of that learning, being able to share that powerful information with others, and that's really what we want to be able to do. Going a little further, here's really the intended outcomes from a professional development standpoint. Number one, we want to change opportunities for students and engage in those powerful learning opportunities, and the greatest facilitator of learning are the teachers within our classrooms. So we have to provide what I will call lifeboats for people like me, who are a little bit taken back by technology, and we're in our plan, we will try to provide that support system to ensure that all of us will be able to row the boat in the same direction in terms of implementing this technology initiative and transforming our classrooms. I know this looks pretty busy, but here's the one thing we figured out. Other than a handful of people within the district, and I'm short-sighted, there are many more teachers right now in the district that are using Apple products at a very, very, very high level. But from a leadership standpoint, one of the things that we felt very much in need of is ongoing support from the ground level up from Apple. One of the things they will provide us is an opportunity to complete an educational technology profile. It's a survey, and what it does is provide our staff the opportunity to go in, take the survey, and share with Apple through this tool really their skill level comfort with implementing technology within their classroom. This will not be used by the district for anything other than to group students or to group teachers by professional development group. If you're a novice like myself, you're going to have a different set of needs as opposed to an advanced teacher who has a wide variety of technology background. So we will utilize the data that is provided from this ETP to help assign teachers to our proposed training date that we'll talk a little bit about today. They will also provide an Apple Professional Development Senior Specialist onsite, on the ground in Shawnee Mission. And for us, that's critical because it's one thing to have telephone communication; it's another to fly in an expert from outside the area. The single biggest need that we felt was to have that site-based person to work with Carla Reed in Staff Development, to work with Kim Barney in Curriculum and Instruction, and all of the other Educational Resource Team so that we're ensuring that what they're talking about fits our needs as a district. So we were very, very grateful if this comes to fruition through the Board to be able to provide this trainer onsite with us for one calendar or for one 12-month period. So we look forward to that opportunity. Our goal is to utilize workshops to not just learn how to turn the machines on and off, but also to be able to integrate powerful learning strategies within the classrooms through the technology. And so that will provide us an opportunity to integrate our curriculum and our learning outcomes through that technology system. It's also going to provide us an opportunity as a leadership team to have a strategic planning process so that we have an end in mind, and we're not just aimlessly integrating technology with no end results identified to work towards. We're going to offer summer workshops that will be available this summer and going into the future, so teachers like myself that would feel a little apprehensive will have an opportunity to go in in a no, for lack of a better term, threatening manner and be able to say, "Hey, I need help. Let's go through and work with this." So we're going to try to provide that opportunity. We're also going to ensure that all of our new hires and all of our veteran teachers who are coming back to start the new year will have an opportunity where we will capture a day of their back-to-school in-service time to focus on staff development utilizing the technology. Because if you're like me and you learn about it in March, you might not remember what it's all about when you come back in August. We also want to try to capture staff development time throughout the school year of the upcoming calendar as we work through that process. In relation to the proposed March 24th drop-dead date, if the Board does approve the Apple purchase, one of the components of the Apple purchase is to be able to provide 88 senior specialists who will be provided by Apple to come onsite and provide training for our teachers and our IS staff, our instructional support staff. So the bottom line is what this will provide is an opportunity for our teachers to be grouped and our educators as a whole to be grouped by ability level, in other words, comfort level for me, whether you're a novice or an advanced person. We'll try to group those, and those 88 specialists will be able to provide training in a hands-on type of environment for 1 to 25 staff members. So we feel very comfortable about that opportunity, and as you can see, it's basic navigation as well as to discover not just the management piece that the tools allow you to do, but also some of the teaching and learning components. So it'll be a busy six-hour time period where our staff will be able to provide, bring their tools to the meeting and have an opportunity to explore in a supportive environment. One of the things that's critical is you have to grow your own. Teachers learn best from teachers, in my humble opinion. So one of the things we're going to try to build is a kind of a two-part platform. One would be a teacher leadership cadre composed of 120 Shawnee Mission School District teachers who would be willing to step to the plate and receive advanced training, as you can see, six additional training dates from Apple, and they would be able to service coaches and mentors within their building. This would be for elementary, middle, and high. We would designate those according to their level and size of building. It would provide an ongoing professional development model because we know from research and from experience, you can't do a say-and-spray. You can't just present it once and hope it sticks. This has to be ongoing and job-invented, and as you can see, there'll be the opportunity to share best practices in terms of lesson design. The T3s, for lack of a better term, train the trainer. I know you probably thought Arnold Schwarzenegger, but the end result is we're going to try to identify 20 Shawnee Mission School District staff members to literally serve as the train-the-trainer model. And what they would do is they would get extensive support, ongoing support, and they would be available to lead the trainings moving forward. So we will have Apple providing that initial support. We'll have the on-ground Apple trainer, senior specialist to support us, and they will help train these two groups as we move forward so we can build capacity. Think forward another year, we would try to bring another 120 teachers to be part of a teacher leadership cadre, so it wouldn't stop with just 120. We continue to build inertia in terms of growing our leadership capacity because we can never have enough qualified leaders. And that's just a simple overview of the training protocol. One of the things I was always cautious of or nervous about as a building administrator sometimes are, in my prior life as a building administrator, we trained our teachers to become tremendous educational leaders, and we forgot sometimes to help the principal become the educational leader. So what we want to try to build into play is a principal leadership cadre, so the principals will have the opportunity to have extensive training as is identified within the slide, and they will be a part of the strategic planning process as well because we truly want to empower them to be instructional leaders of their building, and so they will receive training. And yes, people like myself, they will try to bring me along. I will probably have to have some remedial tutorial support, but we will also have the two additional training opportunities from Apple to help us also conceptualize what we want to do and how we want to get there in terms of integrating technology and draw our curriculum and in our instructional delivery model. And this is, I'm one of those people loves to hit quotes because I'm never smart enough to capture the essence, so I try to use other bright lines. I think this pretty much says it all. Our goal as a district is to ensure that we provide a high-quality educational experience for all of our students. Apple and the software that is available through their design process provides those opportunities for our students so that we are not just talking about the 21st century. We're actually moving our kids beyond because how can we, and I think many of you are familiar with the concept, education and information is being assimilated at such a rapid rate today that we can't memorize everything. We can't use textbooks because as soon as we buy a purchased printed textbook, it's out of date. So in today's world where information is growing in quantum leaps, technology provides us an opportunity to meet kids where they're at and accelerate their learning opportunity. And as an educational services staff, we're going to ensure that we provide the support so that lifeboats and lifeboats can be provided for people who struggle to integrate technology into their lesson design so that all students can achieve at high levels, and we don't want to leave our teachers and administrators behind. So thank you. I'm open to any questions you might have.
Questions, Mrs. Saver?
Two things. I think you're probably solving a problem that we as a district have had for many years with complaints from parents. It's the weight of the backpacks with the books. That may be slightly diminished now with a different kind of book. But second of all, this also looks like it provides an opportunity to work with, in community partnerships with some of our business people, like libraries and things like that. So I see that as a positive as time goes on because just that interconnection with the library, you might not have a parent who can take you, but access to kids that never had that opportunity will be a good change.
That's good, and we've actually begun, we've entertained those conversations already with Johnson-Kenny Library System, so you're exactly right.
Mrs. Levin?
I'd just like to, two things that are interconnected. I'd like to assure that everyone be given the opportunity to be extremely proficient with this technology, that even though we all may start, because I'm hoping the Board gets to participate in this as well, that we, no matter where we start, that we're all, the expectation is that we all really come to understand this technology and how to maximize it and how to use it as a tool to think with, as Seymour Papert once said.
I applaud you. And the SAMR model that they presented, originally it would be very easy for me to see substitution, but in my initial opportunity to explore, of course, they picked science concepts when I was out there, so I was just really having a great time. The opportunity for me to expand where I wanted to go based well beyond where they were directing us in the training was powerful because I was in charge of my own learning. So to me, that's really what problem-based learning is all about. Give me a problem, let me find the resources to help support me, and have a teacher to help facilitate my learning. So I think this model, like I said, if I could learn to use it, anyone will be able to use it, and as I said...
You shouldn't sell yourself short.
So, no, but I think the bottom line is we will have a high standard, and the key is we all have to embrace the technology and realize we're going to learn as we go. And I think probably the hardest thing, I can say it for teachers, they may not want to say it, but no, it's all right for you to say, "Hey, guess what? I can't get this to work," and ask a student to help us because we have resident experts within our own classrooms, so don't be afraid to open up and allow them to help us.
This question might be for Dr. Henson. How old is our current technology? When was the first time we really put this system in?
Anybody help me with that? Mr. DePiero, do you know the answer?
When we first started putting all of these computers, I actually worked at the help desk.
We have a system now that we currently maintain and is current as far as the model that's being implemented. You know, most of our infrastructure, most of our technology currently is PC-based. Every year, we replace $2 to $3 million of machines. We upgrade software on an annual basis. We implement systems for administrative purposes. Currently, we're putting a new student management system in. We're looking at other systems. The PeopleSoft system's an old system, but functioning for us as far as our financial and human resources. I don't know if it's a matter of our current technology being antiquated. The machines and the software we have out there is current, they're current machines and software. This is a new model of delivery that we currently don't have. The current delivery model that we do have is different than this one that does not integrate a device for every student. Our current model is more of a resource where we have computer labs and writing labs and resource labs that are used on a scheduled basis. This is more of an integrated model where each individual student will have their own device and have that opportunity all day long instead of when they go to a specific class. And the other portion of this implementation that's different than our current implementation is that in the subject areas and the grade levels, the integration between the technology and the subject matter is not quite there because of the lack of student access in the classroom and the lack of materials and resources that the teachers have to draw upon. And so with the training that they're receiving as far as the resources that are available to them and the access that the students are going to have in the classroom is a paradigm shift in what we're currently delivering. And so I wouldn't say our technology is old or antiquated, but it's a different concept and delivery system that we're looking at. Does that answer the question?
Way too long.
Okay. But we've been adding computers since 1992.
As I look at the contract, which you can go on Board Docs and look, there's a great discount, which is very much appreciated. Assuming approval tonight, and maybe this is not for you, Dr. Strike, maybe this is for Dr. Henson. First of all, the IT people, IT people that are currently in the room, their legs are just shaking right now. They're just waiting for this to happen. Could you please maybe give exactly how this is going to roll out or suggested to roll out?
I can do that. A couple of points of information for you. One of the questions is, well, how in the world do you pay for it? And so we're going to hear about that tonight, and so in a presentation, we have a couple of different options. So the money is available to us, and so we look at $20 million, and that's a lot of money in one sense, but literally, we're purchasing tens of thousands of devices here at the same time, and so the funding proposal is in place. And so upon approval tonight, then we will proceed tomorrow with purchase orders. The goal is that we have our computers, let me outline it for you. Every teacher in the district will receive a MacBook. Every teacher in the district will also receive an iPad. So every certificated staff member is going to have an iPad and a laptop. We will have Apple TV that will be in every classroom for this next school year. So literally, you can project from your iPad, your laptop, as Dr. Strike demonstrated tonight, even from your iPhone, so that will change a part of our instruction. Every high school student, when they return to school in August, will receive a laptop. It is not to be just kept at school, it's a 24/7 laptop with them. Every middle school student will receive an iPad, not to just stay at school with them. Again, we're talking about accessing information and technology 24/7. Every elementary school student will receive an iPad as well. Those students in grades three through six will be allowed to take those home. Grades K-2 through two will keep those iPads at school. So every student in the school district, K through 12, receives either an iPad or a laptop. Again, some of these are going to stay at school for use. Now, let me give you a caveat. We're going to roll out for 10 elementary schools, all high schools, all middle schools, 10 elementary schools initially. Why? We would love to roll out to all 33 elementary schools at the same time. At the present time, we don't have the capability to roll out to all 33 and make sure that that process goes correctly, make sure we have the infrastructure in place, and the personnel to make that happen. And so the great question is, well, which 10? Well, I am happy to announce, that's Debbie Fortmiller's decision. With assistance. And so every high school, every middle school, 10 of the 33 elementary initially, and then we'll implement the other 23 elementary schools. We can't do all 33 elementary initially. So all high school students, laptop, middle school iPads, elementary, the 10 of the 33, three through six, and then K through two are differently with the iPads. Our goal is to have all of these devices in place for our staff so we can do an in-service on March 24th. Now, students won't receive these devices again until August, but we want to have an opportunity to provide the initial in-service professional opportunity to provide the initial in-service professional development to our staff in March. So, they will have other opportunities through the spring and the summer, but really, the integration of the technology for employees, not until August.
We are.
And I think it's important to understand as well, we have a number of teachers that are doing a great job with Apple technology currently. We have 600 to 700 iPads currently in the school district. And so, for some teachers and some of us that have been a professional a long time, the learning curve will be steep. Others, this will not be new for them at all. They've been accessing funds through SMF, other donations, to be able to move in this direction. And so, the significant issue for us that's been pointed out is the breadth of professional development. That's going to be a challenge for us as well. I think it's imperative to understand, this type of an initiative, we will have hiccups. I mean, this is a very large undertaking, but it's certainly what our community and our employees have asked, and so, we will deliver. But there will be hiccups. So, we've tried to dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's to this point. And so, we've worked with school districts, really around the country, to say, what went wrong for you, what went right, what are the things that we need to think about? I really have to congratulate, I guess. We've had so many of our staff that have worked a lot of long hours the last number of weeks and months. We had multiple meetings over the holidays. People were in the office here working on this project. All the folks at Indian Creek, gosh, I feel for them because, you know, the amount of load they're taking on is really phenomenal. It's the right thing to do for kids. But I think it's imperative everybody understands, it's a very large effort, and people have been working diligently to make this happen. We will have hiccups, but it's going to go really well at the same time.
I think it would be important to share where this funding is coming from, that it's not operating.
Yeah. And two things, Mrs. Neighbors. One, as Dr. Strike mentioned as well, we're having some really exciting conversations with partners in the process. We're having extremely exciting conversations with the Johnson County Library System. So, imagine that students at school can also access the Johnson County Library System ebook process. How that impacts what we do in our library media services. And so, those conversations are in place. So, we're going to talk tonight about capital outlay and general obligation bonds through capital outlay. This comes through the capital outlay account, not through operational purposes. So, this is not money we can spend on teacher salaries or buy supplies with and those things. Two distinct funds. And so, when Mr. Barto and others come tonight to address this, we're talking about capital outlay and funding through the capital outlay account. We can purchase technology through capital outlay, but two very distinct funding streams. Thank you.
Mrs. Bisfield?
I only have a concern about our sending things home. Do we think all of our students are in places where they have connectivity and the ability to use those at home? Or are we going to try to help them find places, have our libraries open?
A couple of answers to your question. One, it will be imperative that if students don't have internet access anywhere else, they need to download the information they need at school before they leave. We have, and are having conversations with other providers, that can we provide wireless internet connectivity in certain locations? I'm not ready to announce those yet, but we're working on that as well, understanding not everybody has internet activity in their home or wherever they might be residing. So, yes, that's something that we're working on as well.
Mrs. Neighbors?
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I had the opportunity actually to work at the help desk for a number of years when I worked for the district. And I can truly say, this is a huge undertaking. And while I know there are a lot of teachers that would all like to have it at the same time, you don't want to have something that doesn't work and you're calling for help on because you don't have the staff to facilitate that ability. So, I think staggering it somewhat probably will make for a better rollout, even though it's a little bit longer. But I think the experience needs to be positive, and you really want your help desk people not to kill you on your first call, so patience is a virtue.
It is a virtue. Thank you.
I seem to be always the person that talks about fees, so potential fees that we might charge parents in relation to this technology. Can you speak to that just a little bit? I know, I'm not sure if it's been decided or not, but I just see the lines at the high school when August comes around, or July actually, in fee payment and the amount of money that our high schools, our families are paying at the high school level especially. When you have two or three kids in the district, it really adds up. So, I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit.
We're going to talk about fees now, we're going to talk about them later in the board meeting as well, and some information we're going to provide to you. And so, Mr. DePiero, you've been working on kind of insurance coverage, and we're looking at several different options there. Anything you can comment on, please?
Presently, we've, April has provided information that, from several districts, on how they functioning. Right now, we're discussing insurance with two different companies that Russ and Apple will be looking into. There's different options, obviously, that you can proceed as far as, since you're going to be giving a student a device to take home and they're going to be responsible for, if that device is lost or stolen or broken, you know, what are those students' responsibility? What is that student's responsibility? And so, what we're currently looking at is an optional participation in an insurance program where the student would pay the premium for the coverage, and they could opt into that program if they desire. There are a couple of different insurance carriers that provide that option, to have that on an optional basis. And it's running between $25 and $50 per year to have that insurance coverage. At the present time, we're looking at it to be an optional fee, so if you don't opt into it, you're going to have to accept the responsibility for the device. And so, if it's lost or stolen or however, whatever happens to it, then that would be the individual students and parents' responsibility instead of having an insurance fund for it. The insurance companies I've talked to said to anticipate a 3% to 5% loss ratio on most of these items. And so, as we proceed, we've been moving a little faster to get all the information in place. Hopefully, by the end, by the time the next board meeting, we'll be able to bring something forward. But certainly, by the end of the school year, before we set the structure of the program for next year, we'll be able to bring some programs forward for the board to review. But it, most of the schools that we've looked at do have a fee to the student for that coverage, whether on an optional or a mandatory basis.
But there would be things also, fees that would probably go away, correct? With, like, the planner fee?
Planners and examples.
Planner, $5, but still, I mean, there might be something that might...
There might be some, there might be some that are, that are go away because of the, because of having the device and having it on the internet.
And we're trying to be very careful in relation to student fees. I think that's been clearly stated in our community. We need to monitor that very carefully. And so, we're trying to be very strategic in relation to insurance coverage. Really, the breakage and loss percentage is really small in comparison to what people would suspect, but it's a great question.
Yeah. Now, and I think, maybe I didn't hear, the other 23 buildings that don't get this initial 10, the 10 elementaries are going to get the initial full-blown model. The other 23 buildings will have iPads available, but only on a resource basis. And so, if a building has four sections of fourth grade, they're going to get enough iPads to cover the number of students and so, of the highest grade level. And so, they will have the resource. It's just going to have to be a shared resource in that building instead of having an individual device per student. And so, it's not that those 23 buildings are going to be totally left out in the cold. The teachers will have the devices, and there will be a shared resource in the building that they can, they can utilize to incorporate any of that into their, into their lesson plans.
For how long? Do we anticipate that?
Just hopefully for a year because the second phase, this is the first phase, and it totals about 20, it's going to be between 19 and 20 million. The second phase would come on the heels of that. Hopefully, we get the first phase ironed out, and the second phase, I would see coming the next school year or earlier if all the, if all the issues are ironed out. And we're looking at between $6 and $8 million for that second phase.
Well, I'm sure the question that begs here as well is infrastructure to support all of this. And I think that's the next item on the agenda, and I don't want to jump ahead too quickly here, but that is definitely a process that's been thought through very carefully as well. Mrs. Bisfield, did you have a question?
Well, I have probably just sort of a parliamentary procedure concern. Should we, at this point, go to P2 so we have approved what we're using, rather than voting first on something that we don't yet have the funding for?
Or if you want to vote tonight, the approval of the Apple computers...
We currently have capital outlay funds to cover this. I mean, there's a current balance in the capital outlay funds to cover this purchase. It's just that we wouldn't have money for anything else.[1243.01][1243.01](Laughter).
Mrs. Ma.
I'd like to move approval to purchase Apple computers.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded for the Apple computer purchase. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. We'll move on to O3. Dr. Henson?
We have several items here. We can give you as much information or as little as you want. Some of these are in relation to the issue that was just approved. Some of them are new, some of them, we've just moved up the timeframe that we were going to do anyway. And so, the first one is to purchase hardware from Hewlett-Packard and CDWG for a price not to exceed $96,000. Again, you have the contract, we can give you as much or little information on all these if you want to, but it's infrastructure backbone that we need to make this happen.
Are there any questions from board members?
I would move approval to purchase the hardware for Hewlett-Packard and CDWG.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Any other discussion? Mrs. Ma.
I would just note that as we go through our strategic plan, that if there are buildings, for example, we're going to be doing architectural work for Shawano, that that will be taken into consideration as we hardwire infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Dr. Henson, O4.
Casper is really not a ghost. This is the software subscription, training, and inflammation, implementation services, priced not to exceed $75,630.
Any questions?
I would move approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Levin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. O5.
Upgrade district internet access service. This is a price, a monthly price of $25,000. Some of this was planned and some of it we've moved up in advance, but we can't have devices that don't access the internet appropriately.
You can't have that. So moved. If you want to take a second? Second?
Sure.
Okay. Dr. Denny and Patty Mack will put down for that. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to O6. Dr. Henson?
This is a specific portion of Apple training. It's important that our individuals at Indian Creek have the right training, and so, this is for that training not to exceed $50,000.
Okay.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. O7. Dr. Henson?
Also, we have to have the appropriate network switches and internet router. This is a cost not to exceed $400,000. And I will give you a positive piece of financial information. We were scheduled to upgrade our PC equipment for the business operations this year. We don't have to do that now, so that's a money savings, I think. Remind me, Mr. DePiero, how much money that was?
I believe it was a million dollars at least.
And so, savings, if you will, in that regard, but...
It works.
Not quite enough, but we're working on that. So, network switches, internet router, not to exceed $400,000.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Neighbors. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to P. Dr. Henson?
This is the revised board policy, EGAEA-R. It's in relation to the acceptable use guidelines for educational networking. It's the first reading. And so, looking at our current policy in relation to acceptable use for the technology that we've adopted, again, it's the first reading. Would be happy to entertain corrections, suggestions, items that you might have on this, but we'll bring it back to you at the next school board meeting.
Are there any additions, corrections, thoughts on this new policy correction?
I just had one...
Mrs. Levin?
...question, and I'm assuming it's because of this new access to technology that we're implementing these, these new additions.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had a question just about current, current practice. Were some of these already kind of current rules, but they were on, like, not written down? I mean, like, friending students and that kind of stuff?
Dr. Chapman?
No, it's good practice, but we really didn't have a board policy that said what we can and can't do. But it is something that we've talked about, but it was, it's more of an informal process right now. And when we looked at this policy, we really felt strongly, and with guidance from NSBA and KASB, that we really needed to put this in place so that we would protect ourselves and our, and our faculty.
Any other questions? Mrs. Ma.
I just want to note that we did revise it in August, this past August, so we're keeping up with it as well.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, that's the first...
Sorry, and this would include things like Edmodo?
Yes, social networking.
So, like, when the teachers, having them submit things or do things or via, like, Edmodo, so this would cover, so they just need to, that teacher needs to make the administration aware of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, that's the first reading. We'll move on to that at the next board meeting. P2. Dr. Henson?
Okay, before I introduce our guests that are going to present to us tonight, again, I think it was a great question, Mrs. Neighbors, in relation to operational budget and capital outlay. So, what we're talking about tonight are general obligation bonds through capital outlay. And so, we have several things that really have been pondered by the district for the last several years. We've had a facilities committee that's gone through several different reviews of really the facility needs in the school district. And I think it's imperative tonight, we're talking about the issuance up to $85 million in the GO bonds through the capital outlay account, which is through a current revenue stream. So, this is not increasing taxes, it's not changing the levy. These are bonds that can be issued through the capital outlay fund through our current levy. Now, we're also looking at, we have a lot of needs that are way beyond this amount of money. And so, I have pulled, and we've had some discussion internally about the last two facility committee reports in relation to all of our needs, and looking at how do we address all of these needs going forward. One of the things that we're discussing that we will probably bring back to you in the future is a comprehensive bond issue that would go to the voters of the school district. And so, that is in our near future. And so, we'll better define near as we continue to really vet the process and look at these issues. As you know, we have 16 buildings right now that we're working on for safety and security changes, and we have architects that are working on those issues. Tonight, the Architects and Engineering Services for Shawano Elementary School. So, as we receive the report back from our demographer, which we'll have in a couple of weeks, be able to bring to you at the February board meeting, hopefully able to better predict areas that are going to re-green, population trends and shifts. So, we have buildings that are identified for rebuilds, we have some areas that we're already at capacity, so those are issues for us. We have some significant HVAC needs, some roofing needs, some parking needs, we have some stadium issues. And so, we have a lot of needs, and we're trying to, again, vet that process again in, in the near future, potentially, potentially in February, bring that list of recommendations back to you as well, so we can look at this from a comprehensive standpoint over the next several months and years. So, with that tonight, several things that we have slated, obviously Shawano, we have our Apple technology, whether that happens, and again, we could do that internally if we wanted, or if we don't want to stretch ourselves that far, it can be funded either through these bonds or through Apple funding as well. We've heard a considerable amount from the community about why in the world do you have all these administrative buildings? It's a great question. And so, the question is, can we reuse the Antioch Middle School site? And so, we've made the determination, we can't reuse the Antioch Middle School building because of the age of the building and the cost to repurpose that building just really doesn't make sense in relation to raising the building and having a new facility. But can we move multiple administrative sites to one building site, be far more efficient in our operations, ultimately, hopefully, after we pay for the cost of the building, saving the money, saving the district money on the operational side? Significant issue, but we can only do that construction through capital outlay. Does that make any sense? You following me? Okay, glad you're following me. And so, to do that, though, and to proceed on some of these issues, we have to have authorization to issue bonds, and we wouldn't issue them all at the same time and only when they're needed, again, through the capital outlay account. And so, we've been working with George K. Baum, and so, going to ask Mr. Barto, whomever's coming, both, both of you gentlemen, come and share with us tonight and unravel the puzzle that I've created for the board tonight, please.
Thank you, Dr. Henson, Madam President. It's truly our pleasure to be here tonight. First of all, I'm just going to start off by saying, wow. How great is it to come to a board meeting and listen to how to improve instruction, rather than this or that, this or that, the economics? But you're finding ways to help improve instruction. And again, as Dr. Henson so eloquently said, doing what's right for kids. And I just commend you all, I commend Dr. Henson for that, because I just can't say enough about that. It is truly, truly, as a guy that goes to a few board meetings, it is so refreshing to hear. I also wanted to point out, introduce Roger Edgar. Roger's one of our partners with George K. Baum and Company, is here tonight with us. David Artterberry, some of you know David. David Artterberry could not be here tonight. David is a Shawnee Mission South graduate. The first question he gets tomorrow is, tell me about his academic decathlon.[709.82][709.82](Laughter). I hear about that. Anyway, what we're here to do tonight is, is to keep the legacy going. The Shawnee Mission School District has a great legacy. You have a great tradition, you have great schools. But we must keep moving forward, and that's one of the things we want to do tonight, is to assist you in moving forward. And that's by the approval of the resolution to approve the issuance of capital outlay bonds. As Dr. Henson said, we have a number of needs, number of projects. But again, technology has risen to the front, safety has risen to the front, and there are some major facility needs that we can accomplish over the summer if we can adequately fund those needs. And so, what we have before you tonight is a resolution that would authorize the district to go out for sale, an amount of eighty, of not to exceed eighty-five million dollars. And again, we emphasize it's not to exceed. We will come back with final results upon the sale. I'll let Roger cover in detail a little bit more about the resolution and the process. But it's basically our ability to, to implement the changes in which Dr. Henson has said, to implement the Apple, the sale of, the purchase of the Apple computer and the products, to get started on some of these safety issues, and to get started on some other major capital facility projects over the summer before we have to go to the voters. And as you look at this, this is a lot of moving pieces in this puzzle. But you have to look at the long term. We have this piece in which we're addressing right now, we're going to have other pieces as we go through, but we will have a plan in place to help you address, hopefully, all of those needs, probably not all of them, but a major portion of those needs as we go forward. Roger, you want to cover the resolution tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Roger Edgar. The resolution that you have before you, as Dick said, it authorizes the issuance of an amount not to exceed eighty-five million dollars in bonds. You don't actually issue those bonds tonight. We would need this resolution to enable us to go out and do the things necessary to sell bonds and bring a resolution back to you at a future board meeting where you would actually pass a resolution that would, that would issue the bonds. So this is a preliminary step. It gives us the ability to put the plan together. Just to make sure for the public and for the board that the eighty-five million dollars that we're looking at here, that not to exceed number, would include the Apple purchase. So it's not eighty-five million plus, you know, the twenty million for Apple. The twenty million or seventeen point nine, or whatever that number ends up being, is inside of that eighty-five million. The, you know, as your financial advisor, we're not motivated to issue the largest bond issue that we can. The capital out, we actually want to issue the smallest bond issue we can. Your capital outlay levy allows you to levy up to eight mils for up to five years. That produces about twenty-three point two million dollars per year for that period, clearly enough to purchase the Apple computers and do some, quite a bit of additional improvements for your district. The capital outlay levy, virtually every school district in Kansas has this levy. It's for capital improvements. It's a separate fund from your general fund, which is for education and, you know, the fund that school districts in Kansas have so much pressure with from the state. To the extent that you can do these improvements on a pay-as-you-go basis without the issuance of bonds, then, you know, we'll try to make sure that, that, that happens, and that the bond issuance, this what we call a capital outlay bond, we'll try to make as small as possible. But we have to bridge our cash, our revenue receipts with, with your expenditures, which frankly are a little more front-loaded than twenty-three million per year over five years. So that's where the bond financing comes in. That's, that's why we're doing the bond financing. We anticipate that the, the interest rate on the bonds, when we sell them, if we were in the market today, and this changes every day, but if we were in the market today, rates are still very low, and we could sell bonds for one and a half to two percent. We have a quote from Apple that we're trying to, for a rate less than that, for that portion of the project. And we're looking very closely at that, really just trying to make sure that we understand all the details in their proposal before we would recommend that, recommend it to you. We like the rate, we want to take it seriously, but we've really got to figure out what the terms are and make sure there's nothing in there that, that would come back and surprise us. And so, we're working diligently to see if that's a viable option for a part of it. So we'd have one bond issue or a Series A and B, you know, with the Apple financing if it works out.
We'd also like to commend Mr. DePiero and Russell and Dr. Henson, because we have sat down with them on a couple, three occasions, and continue to try to work through this and make sure we're maximizing everything that we possibly can in order to obtain the best financing and the best way to finance all these, these much-needed improvements. Any questions you might have that we might be able to answer?
Any questions for Mr. Barto? Mrs. Mack?
I have one, if you don't mind. Part of the fiduciary engagement letter states that the provider, which would be you, would assist us, the issuer, is that correct? In the preparation, coordination, and distribution of printed matter, including circulars, press releases, special mailings, et cetera, in order to acquaint the issuer's population with the benefits and financial considerations of this project. I'm, as Mrs. Neber said earlier, we do want to make this distinction about our operating fund and then our capital outlay fund, because as we have approved a lot of money tonight, a lot of purchases tonight, I believe that it's very important, and I think others would have, I can't assume what you guys would think, but I would think it would be, we want to make sure that the Shawnee Mission patrons understand that their taxes will not be raised, and that our mill levy, which is the lowest, will not go up. So I'm just wondering if you have anything, as we go forward, if you have any thoughts on what, how you would provide those services?
Well, I think as we go forward and we, we get ready to enter the marketplace, we'll want to work with the district and its, and its public relations people in getting the information out, because we're going to have great news when we come back for the sale, because people are going to want to own these Shawnee Mission School District bonds. They're going to be coming in very, very low interest rates. We're going to have a great story to tell. And I think not only can we talk about the great rates, but we can talk about the no levy impact. We can talk about that these are not operational funds, these funds cannot be spent on salaries, these funds cannot be spent, you know, on teacher, our teachers, they have to be spent on capital outlay. And we'll want to emphasize that with the district public relations.
Thank you.
Our people.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you. I would move approval-
Thank you.
-of the resolution to issue cap, general obligation capital outlay bonds.
Second. Dr. Denny?
I've spent enough money tonight.[1239.23][1239.23](Laughter).
You're sweating over there a little, Mrs. Neber. You're making money. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the general obligation capital outlay bonds, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to reports to the board. First one is petty cash.
And it's rather ironic, the first report coming to you is petty cash. Mr. Knapp, you're somewhere back there in the audience. Russ, if you'd join us up here at the microphone, so you can help us with some information tonight. The first report to you is our petty cash transaction summary. It's as of December thirty-one. It's not a new report for you, but certainly we'd be happy to answer any questions about the petty cash.
I just know that very often on our end of the year, we get asked how some schools have petty cash and some don't.
It's the discretion of each building if they want to take the petty cash or not. The petty cash is designed on an in-press basis, minimum purchases for emergency-type things, so that, all those purchases are very small. And so, some buildings don't even want to deal with it, because there's other measures. We have convenience purchases, and they got their activity funds at their building, so they really don't, they don't see the need to use it.
So it's up to the building? We haven't decided that?
You give the approval in July, and then each building decides if they want.
chooses.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions regarding petty cash? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to the activity fund transaction summary.
Mr. Knapp, the form that's before the board tonight, the transaction summary, the building, I'm sorry, the beginning balance, that is as of July one.
That's correct.
That is correct. So that's the carryover balance from the preceding year, and these are receipts and expenditures to date.
Through December thirty-first?
Correct. And so therefore, the ending balance. You notice there can be quite a wide range. And so, if you total it up, and Russ, if you'd go back and explain to the board everything that can be concluded in the activity fund?
Yeah, now, this is, this isn't district money. This is building money. So it's, a lot of it's clubs. In a different elementary, middle, and high, they'll use it for different purposes. So a lot of this, we'll just start with the high schools, since that's where the bulk of your money is, the gate receipts, concession stands, club fundraisers, maybe some membership dues. So that's, that's the, that's the bulk of it. So when we, we'll bring this report back to you in July. They give you the whole activity for the whole school year. And a lot of the bulk of the balances will be sitting in club accounts, and it's for them to spend, not the district. So some of these balances now are a little bit inflated, because they've been collecting money for the fall semester, and they'll spend that in the spring. So, but they are, they are good-sized balances.
So you're, you're saying booster clubs when you talk about clubs?
No, no.
They're not accounted for here?
These are student club accounts.
Booster clubs are not part of the school district. So this would be the French club, the Spanish club, the whatever club.
High schools would have, I mean, like, North alone has about fifty different activities that have-
Clubs.
Club accounts.
Yeah.
They have about a hundred.
They have a hundred.
A hundred. Okay. They have a hundred accounts.[1472.16][1472.16](Laughter).
Hundred clubs.
Any other questions? Mrs. Lovins?
I just, is there an accounting for the disparity? Just seems not to correlate to anything, I guess. Is there a reason, like, for why one school has one hundred seventy, well, or taking in the receipts, takes in a thousand dollars, and another school takes in thirty thousand dollars?
No, I don't think there's any rhyme or reason to it.
It's just disparity of activities?
A good example might just be, at the middle schools, they might do a magazine fundraiser. West Ridge might just net twenty thousand dollars, where another middle school might net forty thousand. Just depends on what they sell, and then how they want to spend it, and what activities they want to spend it on.
If I remember rightly, too, when two of the middle schools were closed, those counts were combined into like Indian Hills and Hawker Grove's accounts. That, I think there was a huge jump in this number, if I remember rightly at that point.
Yeah, we tried to, the money tried to follow where the students were going to.
Are, when the students pay the, again, I'm talking about fees, the ninety-dollar fee, a portion of that goes to the high schools. Is this where it's kept?
Forty dollars of it stays at the building. Fifty dollars comes over to the district.
So is it in this fund or not? No.
The forty dollars is in here.
Okay, so that's where you would see a bunch of these receipts, then? That forty dollars that everybody's paid, that portion of it that stays at the building is reflected here?
Yeah, and they use that for athletics and performing arts.
Right, so that's all in those accounts? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And at the elementary level, though, that's a lot of the field trip money, correct?
That is right.
Yeah.
They'll be collecting, like, for Wildwood.
Yeah, or just the PTA may have given, like, I know at Roseland, we used to give a large chunk of money in the fall.
That's right.
And then another in the spring to support, and a lot of those field trips happen in the spring, so.
Some of those, some of those classes will start fundraising for Wildwood in the second grade.[1610.33][1610.33](Laughter). So they'll fundraise for three years for their Wildwood trip, and they just carry over that balance in that club account for Wildwood.
Can you correlate, like, you were looking for a correlation, can you correlate some of these high figures to the ones that go to Wildwood? Because nobody, I mean, not everyone goes to Wildwood. Just wondering.
Yeah, I don't have that information.
You'll have to go look that up. Okay. Any other questions regarding the activity transaction summary? Okay, we'll move on to the board financial report. Are there any questions that board members have regarding the financial report? Seeing none, I think you're off the hook again. Thanks, Mr. Knapp. All right, that brings us up to board comments. Are there any comments? Mrs. Neber?
So that I didn't have to cut down any more trees, there was a report forwarded to all of you from Governmental Relations Network regarding some statistics and how to read those statistics. So I hope those are advantageous, and they were, they really stood out when we were having our, our meetings. So if you have any questions, call Mark Toman.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to quickly thank them for our recognition tonight as board members, and particularly our video of the thing that's most favorite for all of us, and that seeing what's going on in the schools.
Plus, we got a coveted certificate, you know?
Well, that always is special.
Of our very own.
Right.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to quickly comment that I had the opportunity to read through, it was an old harbinger, I'm afraid, but I did read it cover to cover, and was, just want to commend the students and the staff involved in the Shawnee Mission East newspaper, because it really was a great read, excellently written articles, thoughtful. I was sharing information with my husband across the breakfast table throughout, throughout reading it, and just very impressive articles. Just wanted to mention that. It's a high-quality, high-quality publication, and it's, it's really worth following.
Any others?
I just want to mention, really quick, it's theater season in Shawnee Mission District, and we just finished up with Spamalot at North, and I know that this weekend is Wizard of Oz, and then another weekend is, that's at West.
of Oz, and, and then another weekend is at, that's at West, and then we have Shrek at East, and I know South's putting on one, two, but I don't know the date. But it's an excellent opportunity, I think, for our community to come together and see what goes on in the high school. These theater productions are world-class, they're just awesome to see the kids up there performing, and I just want to, especially our patrons that may be watching tonight, you can go for free if you have the gold card, and I just think it's a really good opportunity for our patrons and students and parents to really get involved and see a great show.
Okay. Mrs. Goodburn?
Oh. Sorry, got so excited about theater.
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel and to discuss matters relating to employer, employee negotiations. The meeting will reconvene at...
Thirty minutes?
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen. No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries seven zero.